Let me get my reading material here in order. Okay. Time is 6:06. Today's date is February the 12th, 2018. I call this regular board meeting of the Weslaco Independent School District to order. Item number two is establishment of a quorum. Let the record reflect that we have a full quorum with the exception of Dr. Rodriguez and Dr. Rivera that are not present here as of yet. Item number three, opening prayer, Dr. Canales.
Good evening Board of Trustees. I'm going to ask Mr. Robledo to come forward and introduce our staff member who will be saying the opening prayer.
Good evening. I would like to introduce North Bridge Elementary 5th grade teacher Brenda Aguilar who delivered the invocation.
Please bow your head. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here and for the many gifts you have bestowed upon us. We ask that you bless each person present with your Almighty grace. We pray that this meeting is successful, productive, and blessed. Holy Spirit, guide us during our discussions. Give us wisdom concerning the issues that we face. Send us your Spirit and be present among us in the mouths of all who speak, in the ears of all who listen, and at the heart of all we say and do so that we may continue to empower our brilliant Weslaco ISD students, staff, faculty, and community. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will move on to item number four, Pledge of Allegiance, Texas Pledge, Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we have two students for the Pledge of Allegiance, Annika Aguilar and Samantha Cordova. And Mr. Robledo will say a couple of words about them.
All right, Board, I would like to introduce two young ladies here. We have Annika Aguilar, who is a 5th grade student at North Bridge Elementary and is the daughter of Armando and Brenda Aguilar. She participated in UIL oral reading and received first place in North Bridge campus meet. Annika is a spelling bee champion at North Bridge. Additionally, she is a superior honor roll student and a student announcer for the daily announcements. In her spare time outside of school, Annika enjoys playing the piano and singing. She wants to be part of the Weslaco East High School Regiment Drum Line and participate in soccer. Annika also wants to attend the University of Texas and become a doctor. How about a big hand for Annika Aguilar? And I know her mother is here. She can stand and be recognized. Also with us tonight, we have Samantha Cordova, who is a 5th grade student at North Bridge Elementary as well and is the daughter of Guillermo and Perla Cordova. Samantha participated in UIL number cents and is in the ACE program at North Bridge Elementary along with being a student announcer for the daily announcements. She has received superior honor roll each six weeks at North Bridge. She loves to play soccer, sing, and draw. She would like to enter her artwork for competition in the future. She is investigating her college opportunities as she begins her quest to become either a meteorologist or a pediatrician. How about a big hand for Samantha Cordova? And if any of her family members are here, can they please stand and be recognized? All right, if you all are ready, let's say the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone can please stand. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. Good job, ladies.
Thank you so much. Moving on to item number five, awards and recognitions, Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we have several recognitions this evening. We're proud of all our students, their sponsors, their parents. Mr. Robledo will be leading us through the recognitions.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy, have a seat and we'll get started here on the awards and recognition. And what do we have? Because tonight we want to recognize a special group of talented individuals who recently competed in the Texas Music Educators Association Choir Competition. How about a big hand as they enter the room? All right, so as I say your name and talk a little bit about you, if you could please step forward. The first group of students were selected to the All District Choir, which includes the top performers from Donna to Brownsville. From Weslaco High School, we have Mary Ann Bosita. From Weslaco East High School, we have Juan Rodriguez. I don't think he's here. Priscilla Duran. Thank you, Priscilla. Edwin Gonzalez and Leslie Guevara. They're not here? Okay. The next group of students auditioned and won a place in the All Region Choir, which encompasses McAllen, Corpus Christi, and Laredo. So this is All Region Choir. From Weslaco East, Treble Region Choir members are Anayi Lucio, Iliana Olivo, And All Region Choir members are Ari Hernandez and Aaron Garcia. Now, making the All State Choir is the highest honor a music student can receive. We especially want to congratulate Victoria Corona. Now Victoria is a three-year All Stater, 4th Chair Alto #2, 1st Chair Alto II in the Women's Choir. Congratulations. And Susanna, Susanna Maldonado, also All State. Now Susanna, she is a 4th Chair Tenor I, 1st Chair in the Tenor Bass Choir. If their parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? Also, we would like to recognize our Weslaco East Choir Director Jeffrey Figueroa. And also Weslaco High School Choir Director Juan Aguilar. All right, thank you very much, ladies. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Moving on to item...
We have a few more awards, more recognitions. We have one more award and recognition and then we'll move on to proclamations. Tonight, we would like to recognize one of our school leaders. The Texan Elementary Principals and Supervisors Association has selected one of our own as the Tepson of the Year of Region 1. His outstanding service is evident through the many programs implemented at his campus designed to meet the academic and social needs of all his students. We congratulate Daniel Buttermer, Principal at North Bridge Elementary.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez, Dr. Canales, and everybody in attendance. I can't tell you how humbling and honored I am. I've worked with so many great people through my years here in Weslaco. To receive an honor such as this is just really quite overwhelming. I look forward to be able to represent our students, our staff, and everybody in our district as we move forward. So thank you again, everyone. Very much appreciated.
Mr. Buttermer, once again, very proud of you and congratulate you on your accomplishments. And I'm going to ask our superintendent to say a few words before we move on on this subject.
Well, this was supposed to be a secret. Mr. Buttermer found out and he didn't tell anybody about it. But we learned about it quickly. So congratulations, we're so proud of you. We know that you're going to represent the region and Weslaco ISD very well and I'm sure the state, you're in for the state running for Tepson of the Year for the state of Texas. And we'll find that out later on, is it in the summer?
It's in June.
In June. So we wish you the best of luck. We're proud you're representing us. Thank you.
Let the record reflect that Dr. Rivera joined the meeting at 6:16. Go ahead, Carlos.
Okay, moving on to proclamations.
Item number six is Proclamations for Family, Career, and Community Leader Day, February 12th through 16th, 2018.
All right, I know we have some representatives here from the FCCLA group, if they could please stand as I read this proclamation. Whereas family, career, and community leaders of America, the National Nonprofit Student Organization for Family and Consumer Sciences Students, Grade 12, helps youth assume their roles in society through family and consumer science education in areas of personal growth, family life, vocational preparation, and community involvement. And whereas the organization extends classroom learning through chapter projects that develop leadership and initiatives and helps young men and women learn how to plan, make decisions, and carry out and evaluate programs of action as they work with other youth and adults in their school and community. Therefore, Erasmo Lopez, President of the Weslaco Independent School District Board of Trustees, does proclaim the week of February 12th, the 16th FCCLA Leadership Week. Congratulations.
Congratulations and thank you for all your hard work and the dedication you have to our students and keep up the good job that y'all are doing for us here in Weslaco. Thank you so much. Moving on to item number seven, Proclamation for Career and Technical Education Month, February 2018.
All right, before we read this proclamation, we're going to show a short video that we'd like to show you.
Talk to your counselor about CTE courses that provide academic credit in science, math, English, fine arts, and speech.
And that video was produced by some CTE students. So great job by them. If anybody is here to represent the CTE education program, if they could please stand Whereas February 1st through the 28th, 2018, has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association of Career and Technical Education. And whereas profound economic and technological changes in our society are rapidly reflected in the structure and nature of work, thereby placing new and additional responsibilities on our educational system. And whereas career and technical education provides Americans with school-to-careers connection and is the backbone of a strong and well-educated workforce which fosters productivity in business and industry and contributes to America's leadership in the international marketplace, Erasmo Lopez, President of the Weslaco Independent School District Board of Trustees, does hereby proclaim February as Career and Technical Educational
I want to congratulate all you students that are going through this program. I remember myself, a long time ago, going through the program, FFA. And still today, there's things that I learned from my teachers out there. Peter Brigo Sr., and I know that y'all remember the name Pete, but I remember the dad was the one that was my teacher. And a lot of things that he taught us and still I use from day to day. So you guys are learning, preparing yourself for life, and I congratulate you all for being in this program and educating yourselves and preparing yourselves for life. So congratulations on all you all doing, what you all are learning, and keep up the Okay, thank you all so much. Moving on to item number eight, Proclamation for Educational Diagnostics Week, March 5th through 9th, 2018.
All right, if we have some representatives here, can they please stand and be recognized as I read this proclamation? All right. So whereas Texas Governor Greg Abbott has proclaimed March 5th through the 9th, 2018 as Educational Diagnostics Week to raise awareness of the important work these professionals perform every day in the Lone Star State. And whereas educational diagnosticians provide important services that benefit children, parents, schools, and communities in Texas, Erasmo Lopez, President of Weslaco ISD Independent School District, does hereby proclaim March 5th through the 9th, 2018 as Educational Diagnostics Week. Congratulations.
On behalf of the Board, we would also like to congratulate you all for being there for this district and being there for the kids and helping them before, you know, before things, you know, go too long and offering them the services and getting them the help that they need before, so they can get further ahead in their lives. So thank you all so much for being there for our kids. Item number nine, Proclamation for National Social Work Month, March 2018.
Social workers, can you please stand and be recognized? Whereas professional social workers work on the front lines of human service delivery to help people solve real problems, whereas professional social workers see firsthand the insidious effects of hatred and prejudice of individuals on families and communities, including a rise in hate crime. Whereas professional social workers understand that crimes against individuals based on race, ethnicity, religion, gender, sexual orientation, political belief, and other characteristics diminish the humanity of victim and perpetrators alike. Erasmo Lopez, President of Weslaco Independent School District, does hereby proclaim March 2018 as National Social Work Month.
And on behalf of the Board, we also congratulate you and recognize you for the hard work that you all do and being there for our kids. Y'all are basically our eyes and our ears and you go out there and right there in the front lines and help these children. And sometimes you don't even know what you're going to find. But it's your job and you do well in finding and getting them the help that they need. So thank you all so much for what you do for Weslaco ISD. Item number 10, Proclamation for Youth Art Month, March 2018.
Do we have some representatives here for Youth Art Month? Right there. Our art students, our fine arts directors here along with some art teachers. So let's read this proclamation. Whereas a study of art leads to a fuller, more meaningful life, and whereas art education provides substantial educational benefits to all elementary, middle, and secondary students. And whereas art education develops students' 21st century skills, creativity, critical thinking, communication, collaboration, and prepares them for higher learning, Erasmo Lopez, President of WISD, does hereby proclaim March 2018 as Youth Art Month.
Congratulations to you all. And we must remember that art is a very important part of a good education. You know, art's been around for a very, very long time and it's going to be around forever. You know, people express themselves in different ways. And through you, you all fine tune the ability for these students to express themselves. And we appreciate all you all do for our kids here at Weslaco ISD. Thank you all so much. Item number 11 is public comments. And nobody signed up for that. So we move on to item... Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much and congratulations on all the awards, proclamations, and recognitions that we just went through. Thank you all so much. It is very important that we understand and we recognize that all of these proclamations that we just went through are very important to the district in recognizing all the people that do hard work and in helping this district to succeed and helping our students to move forward with their education and preparing them for their future life. So as we prepare to move forward to item number 12, I will give a moment to allow some of the public that was here to reorganize on the seats. Okay, we're ready to go and we'll move on to item number 12, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, the superintendent's report, we do have three items, student enrollment, insurance, the newsletter, and facilities and funding as was requested the last meeting. So first of all, for student enrollment at the district compared to this time, 21st weeks of school, compared this time this year to last year, we're up 22 students. In 2016, 2017, at this time, it was 17,446. This year, it's 17,468. So that's our enrollment.
So our number of attendance is up slightly?
Our enrollment is up slightly from the same time last year.
Enroll.
By 22. You do also have the campus level comparisons. Elementary schools were still down 247 when you compare this, the 21st week of school to the 21st week of school last year. We're up at middle schools, 103. Our high schools are down 76. Alternative campus, down 6. And our Alpha Academy is up 248. So that's a 22. That accounts for the 22 enrollment difference. When it comes to ADA, a couple of points I want to make on ADA. We are currently at 95.9%. We do have and will be seeking your approval to submit the two low attendance waivers, one for December, one for January. We'll come back and share with you at a later time how that impacted our annual attendance if you approve us submitting the waivers to the state. So right now, we're at 95.9. On January 12th, when we presented, we're at 96.22. But one of the cold weather days that we'll be submitting the waiver was, I believe, on January the, was it 17th? So it came after that data. Okay, for the next part...
At what point does the ADA affect our revenues, Doctor? Or what number do we need to be at so that ADA is good to us?
We budgeted on, what was it, 16?
16,170.
170. And right now, if you'll look at the chart, we're at 16,120.
We're 50 under?
This ADA that's here is the enrollment, recent enrollment, the children on the pre-k. Only counts as half. So we need to make some adjustments to that. So that's not the true ADA for funding purposes.
What will the waivers do to us if they're approved?
I'll improve it a little bit. I couldn't tell you exactly how it's going to work. Once we get the approval, we'll take out those days for the calculation that we can give you. Particularly not to the update once we know for sure.
Now, on the attendance, are we spearheading? Is there anything that we're doing special to get these kids back or what's the plan?
Yes, our assistant superintendents of both elementary and secondary education are working with principals. We're also keeping track of, are getting numbers for flus to determine, is it illness or is it something else? So I know both Mr. Aguilar and Mrs. Peterson meet with the principals and they discuss that. As a matter of fact, tomorrow on the principal's meeting, they're going to be sharing, we've identified the campuses with consistently higher ADA. And the principals are going to be asked to share with the others. And that's on the agenda. Maybe some of the practices at one campus will be useful at another campus, but at least that we can brainstorm and come up with even more ideas. We need our kids in school, not only for the attendance, but also to prepare them for academic success and success in life later.
I believe this is probably the first time since I've been here that we have been under on our ADAs as what we thought we were going to be. And I just want to make sure that our principals and our teachers are aware of the circumstances and the downfalls of what we're going through.
Right. Another, if I may add, Mr. Sanchez has presented to the principals on the impact. As a matter of fact, that was last week, just last week, correct?
The previous two weeks.
Previous two weeks on where we are with enrollment, the ADA, and how that's impacting the budget. So we're all, you know, aware and we're being transparent about it. base our ADA on the four highest six weeks, correct?
Yes. We did have 37 families last week, so even at the latter part of February, Dr. Canales, they're still coming in.
Okay.
We're positive. And we're at 5.2, 5.3, so again, we're migrant district designation compared to districts last.
We really need George to come up to the mic if, because we can't, I don't think the camera's picking you up.
Good evening, President Lopez, members of the board, trustees, Dr. Canales. I was just mentioning that this past week, we had a total of 37 families that came in. The month of February, early March, we, you know, we're still positive about the last trickle-in effect of migrants coming in. We did have four families, a couple of pre-K 3 families, that, you know, since it's not a compensatory, compulsory attendance, they just decided that their pre-K 3 students were not ready. But we did have four families that moved to another district. But the positive thing about it is that last year, since 2011, Westlake ISD has been the only district that has surpassed the 5% designation in the Region 1 ESC. And that designation is important for the TEA migrant program because it lists us as a migrant school district. There was a total of nine school districts last year that fell below the 5%.
Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Thank you. Doctor?
Doctor.
Let me ask a question real quick. If I'm looking at this correctly, our enrollment is up, but our attendance is what's down. Is that correct?
Our enrollment is up by 22 compared to last year. Part of the enrollment increase is with the Elf program, where the state funds for half a day.
Okay.
So that's one of the things that Mr. Sanchez said that he was gonna get a more thorough reflection on the numbers.
Okay, is there anything that this board needs to do? Is there that we can help to get any kind of help to the staff so that they can get their attendance up? Is there staffing? Is there personnel that's needed or we're good?
I think that one thing is the message that goes out to parents, because as parents, they keep children at home. And they keep children at home sometimes when they really don't have to be kept at home. We want them to stay home when they're sick. We want them to stay home when they're ill, so they don't bring their germs to school, so they themselves heal and get better, especially with the flu epidemic being as bad as it is this year.
Yes, that's true.
But there are parents that just choose to keep their children at home because they're good kids, it doesn't hurt if they miss class, it doesn't matter if they don't come to school today. And that message has to be corrected. It does matter. They do need to come to school, even if they're caught up, on time, getting good grades, they still need to be in school every day. So I think one message is very consistent, one thing that has to go out is very consistent messaging from us, including the board, with parents, that it's important that kids are in school every single day, that they can be there.
Thank you.
Because that does happen.
Okay. Well, let's make sure that the principals, and I know you all have been working on that, so it's very important to get the attendance up, so. Go ahead, Dr. Canales, thank you.
Hold on, I had one question.
Yes, sir.
I just noticing that Roosevelt and Airport numbers are really low. Sam Houston is up 35. Those three schools are about a mile, within a mile of each other. Last year, when we had the realignment of the high schools and the junior highs, and I know we, some parents from some of these campuses were here, is this any reflection of maybe some of those students going to the schools that are closer to them as opposed of the way we were busing them from way north on?
Yes, I'll let Ms. Segura, who helps with staffing and across the school district.
Good evening, members of the board. To answer your question, Mr. Gonzalez, yes, we have seen that several of the students from the airport area, and a lot of this is due to housing availability, they have moved from the Seville apartment and the adjacent areas from airport, move on to la estancia, la rancia, the housing in the Mile 9, which is closer to the Rico area. So we have seen even the families shift that way. One important thing to note, that I know that we're only over by 22, but Dr. Divetta has mentioned this in the past, that we are doing better at this time this year than in the past. I think the elementary section, Mr. Divetta, as you had previously mentioned, was negative in the 300 number, so we have decreased that to the 200s. The middle school, I know that we had also a large number last year and they have pretty much kept up their enrollment in that section as well as the high schools. So basically, the staff, the principals have all been recruiting, they've been working very, very hard.
Right, and you can see in their attendance. And my last question was for the high school, Westlake High. Are their numbers different because of the change we made? Because I know when we realigned, it was gonna take effect this year for the high schools and the junior highs, correct? So out of those 105, are a lot of those, and Ms. Morales is in the back, and it'd be great if she could come up.
Yes.
Just so that we all know, the, what we try to do by realigning the district was to help the district overall, so do these numbers reflect any of these 105?
You are correct. With the rezoning, we did lose some students to Westlake East while some of them decided to stay at Westlake High.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Morales. That was my question, and again, trying to find out where our kids are at all times and just seeing that those numbers were a reflection of the kids not here in our district, or did they just relocate from that campus to a campus near to their home?
Another campus. Right. Good questions. Yes, we also, just briefly with attendance too, one of the things, and we met with Mr. Robledo today, we met with Cabinet on his marketing plan, and the marketing plan includes strategic messaging about elementary and the robust, rich programs we have in elementary, just to make sure that we're constantly communicating that. So we may want to maybe add something, the importance of every single day to it, but we look forward to sharing that with you at a later date.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm sure, doctor, that this flu season, all one has to do is look at the news and see the fatalities and what's going on and the severity of this flu season. And they are telling people to stay home and, you know, so if they're sick, let's get through this season and the flu season and move forward and just take care of our kids and keep them in as much as we can.
Andres, just to be clear, your funding, your budget is based on 16,170?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so for four, six weeks, what is the average?
As of December, it had been 15,846.
So we're off, we're off how much from the 16,170?
324.
Right now, you mentioned 16,120.
Well, that is attendance on the students and all.
The true figures really are, we're off about 300?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This Friday will be the end of the four, six weeks, so we'll put in the updated, correct amount for the ADA for four, six weeks.
You got it.
The next item, we have the insurance and newsletter. Mr. Del Rosa.
Good evening, Dr. Canales, Mr. President, members of the board. I'll go ahead and run through the slides that we go through every month. I'll go ahead and approximate the figures. This data represents September 1, 2017, through the end of January 31, 2018. As far as medical claims only, last year at this time, we're at $5.5 million versus this year, just approximated at $4.1 million. So that's a decrease at this time last year of around $1.4 million in medical claims that have been paid. Prescription drug costs, last year at this time, we're at $1.4 million, this year, we're at $1.3. That's a difference of approximately $60,000, so we're still kind of riding trend there. Fixed costs, this time last year, at $1.2 million versus this year of $1.4. There's approximate difference of $244,000 more, however, that does include what we paid our prior TPA for runouts to administer the plan during the runout period. So grand total this time last year, $8 million approximately versus this year, $6.7 million. So right now, we're looking at $1.2 million less than we were this time last year.
Mike, before we move on, on the fixed costs, do you have the RX and the medical or the insurance combined together?
No.
Is it all the same?
The fixed costs in the prescription drugs are included in the RX. The fixed cost total column that you see, that's what we pay the TPA and the stop-loss premiums for individual and aggregate stop-loss.
Okay.
So those are totaled together. But the admin costs we pay to the PBM are included in the claims cost.
Now, the stop-loss insurance is different than our health insurance?
Stop-loss, yes, of course.
It's a different company?
We have, it's a different company, yes.
Okay, can you separate those for us?
I can send, I can send you all the, all the info, all the data.
And so you're running what, $1.2 million less?
This time last year, yes.
And you figure that this trend will continue or?
I hope so.
I hope so too.
The next one is the Workers' Compensation Fund, and like I said, we kind of changed this report around a little bit, but it's still the same snapshot of data that you're used to looking at. The number of claims we have filed this time last year was 52 versus this year, 56. What we have paid, reserves and incurred, we've paid actually this year, $28,000 versus this time last year of $63,000, with outstanding reserves of $40,000 and $67,000 for last year. And then incurred, which is $68,290 this year versus $130,000 last year. So I just want to, again, stress that the reserve, that the incurred and the paid, the difference is what's gonna be in the reserves. So when we do have a claim, we have to put X amount of dollars in reserves and that's the incurred column. And you have the reserves, which is still what we need to keep, like I said, on reserve to cover these claims that we've actually paid. So we're actually doing a lot better this year than we did last year for our Workers' Comp program. And then the last slide is the Risk Management Newsletter for February. This month, we did concentrate on flu and flu prevention, just data from the CDC and to help avoid the flu and what you do once you get the flu. We also included information on the most commonly prescribed medications for the flu and of course, you know, what to do if you have questions regarding getting this medication if you're running into any problems. And that is our part, if anybody has any questions.
Thank you. Good, good job on your health insurance and keep a good job on that and hope the trend stays the same.
Yes, sir.
Mike, one more question on your Workers' Comp. 56 claims at $28,000, that's, they're all minor?
Yes, sir.
Is it slips, sprains? What's going on?
Mainly slips and falls and strained sprains, but everything has been very minor. So, but regardless if it's, if they come in just for a record only, we still count that as a claim or a potential claim.
Okay, well, let's try to, I know that we're looking to hire and use some more personnel on some, I forget what position that was, but if you need some help on getting these people, our employees training, safety training, make sure that you line something up for our personnel.
I'll let you know, yes, sir.
Is that it?
That's all I've got, yes, sir.
All righty.
Okay, for the last item, we were asked about facilities and funding, so we're gonna move this rather quickly. Feel free to stop either me or Andres if you have any questions as we present. And I'll begin with $27,000 in actual project cost for Westlake High School Transition Center sidewalk improvements, and that came from local construction fund. The next one we had, oops, my turn, I'm sorry. When the electrical upgrades are completed at Margot, including the parking lot lighting, the actual project cost was $466,400 that came from the maintenance tax loan. Then we had tile replacement at one, two, three, four, five schools for an actual project cost of $488,188. This came from the maintenance tax note loan.
These are all completed?
Not all of them are completed.
Up to now.
So we had the field turf at the Lackey Stadium, and that was a total of $809,000, and that came from our maintenance tax note loan.
Doc, before you move on, quickly on that one, just make a note that the safety of our students is utmost, of utmost importance and our staff felt that it was time for safety to replace that field. Everybody knows that an ankle and a slip is very dangerous on these fields, especially when our kids are out there running at full speed and trying to get Westlake to win. So that is the reason that the track was, I mean, excuse me, that the field and the track were both addressed.
Correct, that is correct.
And I think the field was already up on warranty.
Yes.
It was 10 years, so it was time.
The life expectancy had been met and so it was time to do the job. Go ahead.
Okay, next, we have the fencing projects at several of our schools for an actual project cost of $463,251. This came from fund balance for facilities, that's local funds, for the new fences and maintenance tax note loan for the replacement of fences. And all our campuses will be fenced by the end of the school year, correct?
How many more schools do we have, Dr. Canales, that we still have to fence?
Left, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, is that eight? We still have eight? To complete.
That's it for the one.
Then would be all done.
The majority have been fenced, there's just a few left.
Yeah, the early college high school, Aquatic Center, that area that we're missing.
That was what I was gonna ask about. Every day I drive past that, I notice that where the Library Services building is, between there and the Aquatic Center, there's like a canal, a little shallow canal that runs there, but there's no fencing there. Are we planning to fence that area in?
We're looking at that right now. Surveyors had a question on the property that we have, to know exactly what we're gonna do, so we have to finalize that part.
Okay.
Or we let the board know.
Because I'm not quite sure where the demarcation of the property line is between where the American Legion Hall is and our property.
Yes, that's what we're trying to, they were telling us that it was different than what we thought, so we're checking on that.
Oh, okay.
So we can take a look at that and provide an update?
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you.
Is that the last school that needs to be fenced?
Yes.
Margot is completed already, right?
Yes.
Now, as we move forward, doctor, on your, on your list of projects, let me remind everybody here and the public that some of these projects were listed on the bond that we had previously gone out for last year. Had that bond passed, the district would have had to pay approximately 65% of, I mean, 35%
Yes.
Of the project cost and the
The state, 65.
The state would have funded, at no cost to the district, 65%. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we would not have to pay, we would pay 35 cents on the dollar for any, any project that we would have done now and in the future. So, and at this point, what we're having to do is correct and maintain and protect the facilities at full cost to our taxpayers, to our local, to our local and affecting our kids by having to use some of the dollars that we could use for further education and other projects, because we have to do this moving forward, so.
Full cost plus interest.
Yes, full cost plus interest because we have to borrow money.
Okay. The next one is roofing improvements. This, and this is one that we're dealing in phases and we'll talk about roofing a little bit later, we have an item, but what we need to fix now, what we can wait three to four years to fix, we had asked for that. So for now, it's $2,232,000 and this is gonna come for the maintenance tax note loan. We did get a loan for 15 million, for the 15 million, we, what, have 17 million to work with? Tennis court.
Now, as, as we move forward, Dr. on your, on your list of projects, let me remind everybody here and the public that some of these projects were listed on the bond that we had previously gone out for last year. Had that bond passed, the district would have had to pay approximately 65% of, I mean, 35%
Yes.
Of, of the project cost and the
The state, 65.
The state would have funded, at no cost to the district, 65%. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we would not have to pay, we would pay 35 cents on the dollar for any, any project that we would have done now and in the future. So, and at this point, what we're having to do is, is correct and maintain and, and protect the facilities at full cost to our taxpayers, to our local, to our local, and affecting our kids by having to use some of the dollars that we could use for further education and other projects, because we have to do this moving forward, so.
Full cost plus, plus interest.
Yes, full cost plus, plus interest, because we have to borrow money.
Okay, the next one is roofing improvements. This, and this is one that we're dealing in phases, and we'll talk about roofing a little bit later, we have an item, but what we need to fix now, what we can wait three to four years to fix, we had asked for that. So for now, it's $2,332,000, and this is going to come for the maintenance tax note loan. We did get a loan for 15 million, for the 15 million, we, what, have 17 million to work with? Tennis court lighting, this is also on the agenda for today. This is for both our high schools, there's no lights for tennis courts, there are very few at one of them, so we need that. And the total construction cost is between $490,000 to $620,000. We're still waiting to put that one out, and it comes from the fund balance for facility that needs to come from local funds. The next one is the new Wesco High School Field House. As you know, given the number of students we have in programs, the number of sports we have and space needs, this one is going to cost between 3 million to 3.2 million. It's from fund balance for facilities, it's local funds, and just for everybody in the audience, money's left over that through the years, that the budget office, with decision-making from all administrators, approvals from the Board of Trustees, has saved some money for some of these projects. The next one's a new surveillance and fire alarm systems at Wesco High School and Central Administration Office, that's going to cost about $570,000, and that's coming from the maintenance tax note loan. Then we have the Wesco East High School Band Hall. As we know, the band program grew, it's not big enough for the number of students we have participating. We're happy that our students are involved in athletics and fine arts, but need more space. This one is $5.2 million to $5.4 million, and it's coming from fund balance for facilities, it's a local funds from the savings.
How much are we allocated for, for the?
For this one?
Yes.
For the band hall?
How much was allocated?
Initially, well, we thought it was going to be 4.6.
Right.
And then we increased it to 5.6, when we were looking at the estimated cost, including architect fee. So this is just the construction that we're looking at.
Okay.
But we're going to need some more money for furnishings, or international, 3, 400,000 more.
Okay.
Dr. Gonzalez, before we move on, we have a lot of projects here that you got on the list. All of these projects have been previously approved by the board, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, and then they came at the recommendations from the Facilities Committee. For the public, we do have a Facilities Committee that's been meeting on a regular basis, looking at needs, identifying them, and these are the ones that came to the board for approval to move on.
Okay, I'm just making sure that we make it very clear to the public that this is not something that is, that we're moving, starting right now. This has previously been approved by the board and, and moving forward, and you're just making a presentation of all the projects that you're going to have ongoing?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, security access control for all elementary schools, this was also recently approved to keep our schools safe. That's going to cost between 100,000 to 125, and that's coming from fund balance for facilities, it's coming from local funds. But we will have secure, where people have to buzz and, and talk to be able to get into our campuses.
Is that for all elementaries, or is that per school?
That's, that's a total, cost.
For all elementaries.
For all of them?
For all?
Yes, maybe, we may have some additional cost with doors, but that will come later. So athletic facilities remodeling at Wesco East High School and Wesco High School, this one's about 5.5 million, and this is coming from a maintenance tax loan note. But it's much space needed, we needed space for the female athletes, and that took from the male athletes, so we had to renovate that. We have very strong programs with lots of student involvement. CTE Advanced Manufacturing Technology Shop, that's about 140,000, that's coming from fund balance for facilities, that's our local funds. We have welding and woodworking, we're proud to have an early college high school, where students graduate with their licenses in these areas and can get employed while they're going to college and make a decent salary, but we do, with the early college high school, need to add, so it's 700,000 to the CTE complex, and it's funded from fund balance for facilities. The next one is the Wesco ISD digital billboard to replace the, I guess, what do you call it? It's not digital.
Billboard.
Normal billboard.
Paper billboard.
$360,000, and it's coming from fund balance for facilities, and this is the one that we asked the city for, to allow us to convert it to digital, and then also maybe to generate some funds, we had figured that out through some advertising. I think you all agreed to that, right?
On Dr. Gonzalez, on this digital billboard, I believe that you all have, I've heard you all discussing the money that is spent on, on creating and installing all the different
Canvases.
canvases that are, that go up there.
Oh, yes.
And, and this will eliminate that, in other words, our, our personnel will be able to digitally enhance it on a computer, put it together on a computer, and just zap it up there or whatever, Wi-Fi it or whatever you all.
Save, save money in time.
So we'll save money on the paper, we'll save the environment of the paper, and then eventually it will pay for itself.
Okay.
With so many successes, you'll be able to promote more students here in the district.
More students.
We will.
And I, I mean, I believe that also, you know, you can put up more, more public service announcements, or public, you know, community announcements, you know, there's some danger going on, we can probably do that quickly.
Is it, Dr. Gonzalez, is it going to be dual, or just on one side?
On both sides.
On both sides?
For 360.
Yeah, okay.
But you're right, I mean, we have a lot of successes, our staff, our students, information to share with parents, important attendance.
Important dates.
Yeah, important dates, and then in the end, I don't know what year will break even with the amount we've, you know, spent on paper and replacement and getting people up there, but we can figure that out.
Okay.
So it'd be a good thing for our community.
Now, Doc, one thing I do want to add to, to all these projects and moving forward, is I know that we had previously approved all of these projects. After we approved all of these, came to light that our roofing is in really bad need of repairs. So moving forward, and I know that it'll be a different item for the, for the board to discuss, but I feel that we need to address roofing very, very strongly before we move forward on any other construction projects. And I don't know how the rest of the board feels on that, but I know that we can discuss that later. Go ahead.
Okay, let me see where was I. The district-wide HVAC systems, that's for Silva Gonzalez and the Joe Caldeo Kate complex, that's 1.2, 1,272,000, that's coming from the maintenance tax note.
Dr. Gonzalez?
Yes, sir.
If I may add, yes, an additional 1.9 million has been allocated for HVAC, we just, we did not include it, but it has to be allocated to a particular project. Energy money is still working on the evaluation, so we can come up with the specs and the amount it's going to cost us.
Okay, so we have to provide an update on that one?
Yes.
Okay. Then the parking lot pavement improvements, Memorial Airport Drive, Wesco East High School, Wesco High School, CTE Early College High School, perhaps Lackey Stadium, that's about 500,000, that's all the potholes, and that we need to address, that's coming from fund balance for facilities, it's local funds. Then we have the pavilions at our middle schools, Quer, Quad, and Mary Hope. That's anticipated, it's 800,000, it's estimated, right? 800,000, that's from fund balance for facilities, local funds. Central Middle School, instead of getting the pavilion, they need the canopy connecting the sign swing to the main building, and the restrooms in the sign swing, that's 400,000, and that's all, that's from our fund balance for facilities.
Yes.
Chemical storage building, something we'll be talking about later on today, we're figuring about $125,000 for that estimated cost, and that's coming from fund balance for facilities, that is a need due to the chemicals. Parking lot additions, Gonzalez and Silva, our campuses are doing a great job of getting parents to schools, lots of events, limited parking even for staff at these two campuses. So it's something that we do, we do need, it's 500,000.
How, how old are these schools, Andres?
Old.
Gonzalez? 10, 15?
About 14.
1997?
No.
About 20 years old?
About 20.
About 20 years old? You know, and I'm going to say this, that this project, I was considering and, and looking at possibly holding back on it due, due to the fact that we need so much roofing repairs. And, and then thinking about the, the subject myself, I, I, I came with the thought that these schools were built 20 years ago, and all the parking that was being allocated was for the teachers, staff. Now, with the way the, the trend has changed, that we need to bring the parents in, we need to invite the parents and show them what the, what their kids are learning, and, they want to be involved, we want them to be involved. We need to have a place for them to park, or else it's not an open invitation. I mean, if you go to a store, or if you go anywhere, and you're going to go in and there's nowhere to park, possibility is that you won't go in. And we need our parents to visit our school, so that is one of the reasons that, that I feel that, that this is also a very important project. Go ahead, Doc.
Okay, and then the canopy installations at, for protection for children as they're going, two buses are in waiting areas, that's 77,000 to 134,000, that's from fund balance for facilities, Roosevelt, Ibat Elementary, Wesco East High School, and South Palm Gardens High School. And then, is this the last one? Yes. The Lackey State Individual Board, here's another one that we're looking at. As a matter of fact, today, Coach hollered and said, "Help, we have a soccer game, and the, the scoreboard does not want to turn on." So this one, it's, it's an expensive item, it's about 1.3 to 1.1,475,000, that would come for fund balance, but we will need to look at the possibility of financing and a loan for, for that one. But it's to replace that, I believe that one's about, what, 10, 11 years now?
Well.
About 11 years. So that's just to give you an update, Board of Trustees, a lot of work has happened the last two years, and some hard decisions, given that in 2016, the bond didn't pass, we still have needs, we still have growing programs, we, you know, that, that we have to figure out to, to address. So kudos to the team for saving the money, you know, and the fund balance over the years, and then, you know, to securing a, a loan that generated 2 extra million, right, from the 15 million? And then we, we heard the message about being careful about other projects because of the roofing needs.
So initially, we had 17 million allocated for these projects?
Well, that's how, how much we borrowed, 17 million we borrowed.
We borrowed 15, right? But it generated?
Yeah, 17 million. Note that we had
And even, even with the 17 millions, we still have a lot of needs in this district, and that's where everybody has to help, you know, overall.
And we had additional funds and fund balance for facilities, so basically about 32 million putting all together.
Correct.
All the facilities.
And the 32 million is not enough, is basically what Mr. Neto is saying. And so I want to reference what Mo was talking about a little earlier, you know, Doc, you and your staff have done a great job in putting these projects together, and, and the Facilities Committee trying to prioritize the needs of the district. You know, Mo referenced that we need to really take a look at our roofs. We spent some money on safety for our students, our teachers, but this district lacked a lot of love. Our facilities were horrendous. Some of those schools probably weren't touched since most of us here on this board have been on, in those schools, and so kudos to you and your staff for bringing it to us, and to the rest of my, my board members, you know, for, for taking the time and the initiative to know that we need this, you know, whatever we do in the future, whether it's a bond or something else, but our facilities lacked a lot of love. And everywhere you walked, you know, we've grown as a district, you know, Wesco East Fine Arts Program has grown, and we're taking care of those needs, the athletic needs at one high school is being taken care of, boys and girls' sports are being taken care of. We're touching everything, you're touching on everything. And so kudos to you and your staff again, and Andres, you know, continue to update as best we can, principals that are here, you know, and your attendants, you know, since Andres already met with y'all last week, you know the importance, how vital the ADA is to us. It's kind of hard when I drive around town and I see a 5, 7, 10-year-old walking around with mom and dad when I know they should be in school, and it's kind of tough. And so like Ms. P said, you know, it's, it's, it's easier to keep them home if one's sick, than they all kind of stay home, as opposed to one go to school and one stay home. So please, principals, continue your hard work, try to get our kiddos here as best we can, so that we can find those monies that we need at the end of the year. Again, thanks, Doc.
I just have one question, I know it was on the, when we had the city and, and school board meeting, we had talked about the paving for, during spring break, I think, trying to get into maybe East High School or Wesco High School or something like that. I don't know where we're at, and I just want to make sure that, I know it was on here, so just maybe y'all can follow up, because I know people are asking about the, the paving.
I think on our end, we're waiting to rank some of the projects that y'all gave to us, if I recall correctly.
Mo, do you want to say kind of what our joint was?
I think what it was is that you guys were going to provide the machinery, and I just want, and I just wanted to bring it up, because I know it's getting to, you know, in about a month from now, and then people will keep asking about it.
Oscar, I think your mic, you need to turn your mic a little bit toward.
Oh, sorry. So.
We're on it.
Yeah, all righty, just, just make sure we get a follow-up on that, please.
Okay, so what we're discussing, what we're talking about right now is, is there was an agreement, or there's an agreement in the works with the city in regards to us providing material and the city providing the labor on, on repairing some of the parking lots. That's still in, in the works, it's in the process, and I believe that, at the, at the same time, our, our staff is still continuing to repair potholes and, and as much as we can. Of course, the weather's been a little, little iffy, and, but we will continue to do as much as we can with, with the, with the resources that are available to the district. And then when the city kicks in, they will, they will do a, a great job by overlaying the, the complete schools and in cooperation with us, and then we'll give them something to, for helping us out, and we'll work together.
No pressure.
No pressure, there you go, thank you guys.
There you go.
And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, just one more statement from me, is, is that all the projects that you have, Dr., are, are great, we had voted for them and, and approved them previously, and the money's there. We had saved, I believe, was it 18 million dollars that you had saved from, from two years ago, or?
15.
15, and then you borrowed another 17. Okay, so we have a combined 32 million. On the update, I had, I had asked you to provide a, an accounting of the 32 million and where we're at, and, and how that is, is working out, and did you provide that? I believe, I told you that Dr. Rivera previously had given us that on a spreadsheet on the, on the report, and I don't think, I don't think I've seen it.
They, they just have a running tally, I'll provide it in the update in five.
Okay, and then bring it to us on the next meeting, make sure that, that the board gets it, so that
Okay, sure.
We can see the running tally
The running tally.
On, on where we're at, and that we're not going to get in trouble, because it, it does look a lot of, like a lot of work, and it is a lot of work. And I don't want to come up at the end of the, of the, of the list and say, "Well, we can't do this." In other words, let's just make sure that we're, we're covered, and, and don't, don't get in trouble with, with not being able to do something that we, that we promised our, our community that we're going to do for them.
Okay.
And, and also, just so you know, that all of these projects are really the most important ones, but there is a lot of need, as Andrew stated earlier, there's a lot of need in this district, a lot of stuff that we, that we really do need to get, get moving and, and push our district forward and make it a better, better place for, for our kids to be, and, you know, they, they deserve the best, our kids do deserve the best, you know, so moving forward, we're going to need to do something to either borrow some more money, which we'll have to pay interest on, or, or go forward with, with some of the means of, of funding for our, for our buildings. Moving on, we're going to move on to item number 13, consent agenda. Okay, before, let the record reflect, Dr. Rodriguez joined the meeting at, did you just walk in, Doc?
Yes, sir.
At 7:14? I hadn't looked that way, or I hadn't seen you, so maybe you snuck in. Dr. Rodriguez joined the meeting at 7:14. Okay, so consent agenda, starting from my left, Dr. Rodriguez, do you have anything to pull?
No, I don't.
Dr. Rivera?
No.
Sidoro?
No.
No, sir.
Oscar?
No, sir.
Patrick?
Item I, please.
Item I.
I.
Okay, and I would like to pull item L, so.
I and L.
You want to make a motion to?
So move.
Okay, so we'll make a motion to approve?
Accept the
I and L?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item I?
I'll second.
And item L, we have a second by, by Oscar Calero. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Patrick, go ahead.
Mr. President, item I, I've kind of my attention that the, our legal counsel has not yet had the opportunity to go over the, um...
The MOU, yes, the, the MOU has not made its way to our office yet, so I would suggest either that you enable it for the next meeting, if that's possible, or you can approve, subject to our review and approval, but either way, unless you're comfortable, uh...
Well, we'd rather, we'd rather have it reviewed, you know?
I agree.
So we can, it's, it's not a new MOU. My understanding is, it's been around for a couple of years. Mr. Garcia has some more information on it, but still, we like to give, uh, post-reading, you know, to make sure nothing else has been added.
Sure.
If it hasn't been reviewed, then definitely.
Then, then my recommendation would be just to table it.
I move to table the item.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion by Patrick and a second by Oscar to Patrick to, um, table item I. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. I pulled item L. Approval of easement and right-of-way required by American AEP Texas to provide power for the tennis court lighting projects at Wesco East High School. I need to ask whoever's running that project the question. Who's?
Medical?
A medical?
Mister, no, Mister Medical's not here, but Andres and I, but Sergio probably maybe can hopefully answer.
Okay, my question is this. An easement, once we give an easement, we can't take it back. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, is there any other way, or why are we giving?
Yeah, they need it so they can have their resources, or whenever they go serve their equipment, they're able to go in and use it.
Why can't we just give them permission?
Whenever they go what?
For the equipment, for the utilities that they're going to install for the lighting at the tennis courts at East High School.
But are they going to install the lighting, or, or are we going to get a subcontract or a contractor to go in there and put the lighting up?
No, the, the company-
Here we go, here we go.
Good. Here I am. Yeah, so, we're going to be doing the lighting for the tennis courts at East High School.
Okay.
And we're going to have to bring, bring power. Some of that power is, you know, primary line, which requires an easement from AEP so they can run their underground line, so that's what the item on the agenda is for.
Okay. And, uh, now what schools are these?
East.
East High School.
Yes, sir.
Is the principal aware that he will not be able to do anything on top of those lines, or no more construction? You can't build anything, you can't?
Yeah, you can't build any structure, but you can build a sidewalk, you can build a, a road, you just, you just can't build a physical building over it.
How big is the easement?
Uh, I believe it's fifteen feet wide, uh, but I need to confirm back.
It's, yeah, it's, it's, well, it's fifteen feet around the transformer, right, and five feet on each side of the power line.
Correct.
Do you see any problems with Raoul? Or Doctor Cantu, I'm sorry. We just go way back, so I'll call him Raoul, I'm sorry.
I've been called much worse, right? That depends on where the easement is, I'm not, I haven't seen where it would be.
Yeah, I wanted to show you a, a site plan. Our medical has all the information for this.
Our medical could not be here this evening.
If it's, if it's along the property line, or if it's along, you know, the street, we're not going to do it. I'm not a hundred percent sure where it would be, but, um, most of the space around that, uh-
It's limited.
Tennis court is already limited. We, we really can't build a building anywhere there.
Correct.
Uh, so I don't see it impacting too much.
And we need it, so we, the installation of the lights will go on.
Yeah, so the power can come into the site.
Correct.
Okay. Well, great. Can we approve this pending Dr. Cantu's review and opinion?
It's, it's just a question on how, uh, how soon this needs to get done. I mean, that's a-
Well, I mean, he could look at it tomorrow.
I could meet with you tomorrow.
We can meet tomorrow, we can put on the next board item.
Well, no, I mean, I, I will approve it pending, I mean, if he's-
Yeah, we really want those lights.
If he's good with it, then we'll go forward.
This is the only way they can do the lights.
I just don't want an easement to go halfway around the school or, or whatever, and then, oh, boy, what did we just do?
I don't, I don't foresee that that would be the problem.
No, um, you can approve it and then you can adjust it if y'all want to. Like, if you don't want that particular location, we can adjust the location of that transformer.
I just can't imagine it being, you know, too far from the tennis courts, number one, and we don't have a lot of space anyway.
All in saying, we can approve it, pending your review, once you approve, we're good. Let's go.
Okay.
Okay, that's, and that's fine. Okay, so approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item-
Subject two.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item L, subject to the approval and review of Dr. Cantu. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, on, moving on to item number fourteen. Is that correct?
Correct.
Item A, interim financial report for the five months ended January thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Yes. Mr. Lopez, members of the board, Dr. Canales, um, the general fund for the five months ended January thirty-one, two thousand eighteen, uh, of a total budget of a hundred and seventy-two million eighty-two thousand, we have received ninety-four thousand four hundred and seventeen thousand, which represents fifty-four point eighty-seven percent. Large amount there's the tax, the property taxes collected in December and January. On expenditures of a total of a hundred and seventy-two million nine hundred and eleven thousand, we have spent or incurred sixty-five thousand nine hundred and eight thousand, which represents thirty-eight percent. At five months, it's forty-one point three percent of the budget per se, so we've so far spent less than the amount equivalent to the five months that we've been going on so far. Any questions?
You see everything good on this?
Yeah.
Any issues?
Our usual transportation, food service, and athletics are, are a little bit over than the forty-one percent that I had mentioned, but transportation and food service usually buy gas or food for the next month, or not so much transportation, but the food, that's what those are higher about. When we get to the summer, it starts taper off and the percentage is level off.
No.
Athletics, they buy the equipment early, that's why it's a lot of demand right now.
Okay, so you don't see any problem going forward?
Not, not right now. We'll see later on, maybe May or June.
Okay. Andres?
Keep your eyes open.
When we were doing the, the budget, you cut money from transportation, and now you're saying they're over, so had you not cut their funding?
No, no, I didn't say that. I, I didn't mean it like that. I didn't say that. No, we, we did make an adjustment, went down, then we went back and added funds. So, maybe Mister Garcia, Mister De La Rosa, went over what they needed and some of the money that we had put in the past that hadn't been spent, and we made some adjustments. We had the money for what they needed. By now, I said, uh, so, January thirty-one, their percentage is forty-one point three percent, and they're up, I believe, at forty-six. So they're over, not that they had a lot of money or anything like that. That, that's what I meant to say.
I just, I just want to make sure, because that was part of the, the-
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Item number fifteen, discussion and possible action items. Item A, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval to change our regular board meeting schedule on March twelfth, two thousand eighteen. Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, the March meeting is scheduled on the first day of spring break. Administrative staff is recommending that we change the March twelfth date to either Tuesday, March twentieth, which is a preferred date, because that will be a Tuesday, or Monday, March nineteenth, which is a first day back from spring break, and of course, all of us will abide by your wishes.
Motion to approve, uh, Tuesday, March twentieth.
Second.
The preferred date.
Okay, we have motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Sidoro to approve March twentieth as a alternate date for the March regular board meeting. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. March twentieth, Doc? Item B, discussion and possible action to submit a waiver application for lower attendance days to the Texas Education Agency for school year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, on December the eighth, two thousand seventeen, and January seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, our attendance was seventy-seven point thirty-six and seventy-seven point eight percent respectively. So as you can see, uh, on December the eighth, two thousand seventeen, at that time, the previous year, it was at ninety-six point seven-four. January seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, at that time, the previous year was ninety-five point eight-five. We are seeking and we recommend your approval for us to submit those two days for a low attendance day waiver, which will somehow, uh, be reflected in our-
Motion to submit, uh, the waivers in those two days?
Second.
A motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Patrick Kennedy to, uh, to move forward on the, on the-
December eighth and January seventeenth.
On December eighth, January seventeenth, on the applications for the attendance days and low, low, on the waiver for the low attendance days of, from, through TEA on the school year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item C, discussion and possible action for the board to approve the placement and/or purchase of new automated, automatic external defibrillators, AEDs, across the district. Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, I'm going to ask Mrs. Strong and Mister De La Rosa to be available to help with this one. We purchased in two thousand seven, thirty-eight, uh, AEDs. They were under warranty for seven years, and the units are now ten years old with no warranty. The standard of practice are set by the American Hospital Association's two thousand four estimated useful lives of the, uh, AEDs. So, um, the district is recommending replacing the thirty-eight and adding, so we'll have a total of forty-six AEDs.
Since that purchase, we-
Oh, since that purchase, we add-
So we have a total of forty-six.
Okay, we have a total of forty-six in the district. We did get quotes from three vendors, and staff is recommending that, uh, board approve all forty-six AED devices from Cardiac Science Corporation, subject to review of the lease financing agreement by legal counsel.
And they're the, they're the lowest one?
They're not the lowest one, Dr. Rivera. The, the, uh, Mister De La Rosa, do you want to speak to that? They offer some services that the other one does not.
The quote from Cardiac Science, uh, Dr. Rivera, is approximately seven thousand dollars higher per year. Uh, we just want to point out the machines are actually the same. What we are buying is the management and training program and the, uh, if you want to use the term white glove service agreement for these AEDs to make sure that we're in, you know, top compliance, and I can let Miss Strong evaluate a little bit more on that.
Who gets, uh, training on these devices?
This company that we're recommending provides software so that every single employee will, will receive training.
Good evening. Basically, this is a very nerve-wracking part of my job, trying to keep forty-six AEDs with their pads in working order and their batteries has been a struggle, and, um, we've done quite well compared to other districts. However, I'd like to take us to the next level, so if we had a cardiac event, all of our staff would be able to respond in a way that we would have what they call as a save. That's the outcome that we want to have. Right now, we're not there. We are initiating, we're doing two, about two hundred, we're able to train about two hundred people this year in CPR. That's the first level. Then what we're going to do is, the fire department and I will take a dummy to the, each campus, toss it out, and someone will find them, we'll see how we're going to react to if somebody went down. Once we do that, we'll be able to evaluate that team and say, "Okay, we need to do this, this, and this." Throughout the past four years, I'll go to the schools and to the maintenance and offsite, um, AEDs, and I'll say, "Where's your AED?" And people will say, "What's an AED?" I've asked people who have just come out of a CPR class, coaches, "Do you take your C, your AED to practice?" "Well, why would I do that?" Well, there's, there's a high risk of having a sudden cardiac event, and I want to be prepared, and if I'm going to be in, responsible to ensure that we have seventeen thousand, what was it, four hundred students covered by cardiac CPR-ready people, I need to have help. I can't do it alone. And these people will, they provide to me online training, they'll come, and if we have an incident, they'll come, and everybody will take the recording off the AED, but they'll help us to interpret what happened, what we need to do. The, the other big thing is they're going to come and look where we have our current AEDs situated. And, you know, I talked, because they, they were put in before I was coordinator, and every district put them in the same places. So I asked a coordinator who was involved at Mission, she goes, "I don't know, Susan, we all just kind of guessed." And I'd like to not guess about this. There's enough data, there's been, you know, ten years of using them in schools, and these people know where they need to be and why they need to be there. I went out with both trainers at each high school and said, "Okay, if we had a drop at softball and you were inside working on someone, how long is it going to take you to get to the fall?" And they said, "I don't know, you know, we have a minute and a half, which is recommended by UIL, that we have to be able to go from the drop to pick up the AED and have it on that person." Minute and a half isn't a long time. If you, when we, right now, we have one AED on those fields. You go to the high school, and we have, I believe, six, and, and any corner, I mean, a minute and a half. Think about what, how long it takes to do something in a minute and a half seconds. That's why I want, I would prefer this.
Are you going lease or purchase?
Lease.
Lease? What's the recommendation?
The Cardiac Science Corporation, it's actually a lease, but we do, at the end of the term, we can buy them for a dollar if we want it to, so it's-
So that's your recommendation?
Cardiac Science Corporation.
So what was presented?
Second.
Second.
Who's second over there?
Both of us, you can-
Give them half a half.
No matter. Mike, I just have one question as soon as we go to discussion.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Patrick Kennedy on, to go with the administration's recommendations to go with Cardiac Science Corp. on the replacement and/or purchase of the new automatic external defibrillators across the district. Now, we're going with, uh, purchase, or we're going to go with a lease?
We want to go with a finance lease option.
Finance lease option. Okay.
Subject, subject to, if we can add, subject to legal, legal approval and review of the agreement.
Are y'all okay with those conditions, Doctor?
Yes, I just have a question to ask, that's all.
And Patrick? Those are your motions. Are you okay with, subject to legal review of all the documentation? Okay. Go ahead.
Mike, I, I know you just mentioned, right now, currently, we, who is trained right now? Nurses, principals? Nope, just nurses. Most of our AEDs are in our nurses' office.
No, they're not in the nurses' office.
No?
They're in the, um, main office, in the gymnasiums, in some of the coaches' offices.
Depending, depending on what campus?
Yes.
So right now, it's just the nurses?
And the coaches.
And that's why I've been trying to get these five-man teams. We have, I think, eight schools who have not submitted their eight-man teams. Twelve have them submitted, but there are people who are in classrooms, and I don't know how they anticipate having these people pull, when someone's, you know, down.
Right. So, my question, when you mentioned, more people can get trained?
Yes.
As part of our additional cost?
That's correct.
Correct. Okay. Thank you, and try to get as many as you can.
Potentially, every employee could be trained with this program.
Okay.
We'll have two hundred people trained by the end of this year.
Great.
That's the goal.
Well, I know that, sorry, my voice is sort of kind of leaving me, but I know that during the beginning of the school year, every year, there's certain trainings and times for, for get other people in and do training, so that might be a good time for you going to get more people trained on it.
And I think we need to set a precedent also, that this is important for the campuses, because it's not attached to a test, but it's something that could leave a mark on everyone's life for a long time.
So, Mike, maybe between you and Ms. Strong, y'all can, okay, reevaluate those teams of eight that are being submitted and ask that question, how do you expect them to get there? You know, if they are with students, who's going to take care of their class? A teacher can't just leave the kids by themselves, so maybe that group that y'all create, you know, make sure the principals are well aware of, y'all's, want to meet your standards as who can make it there.
We work closely.
Is there any further discussion?
Is there a one hearing, is it building?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Is it a minute and a half away?
We don't know. We can't figure it out. It is, okay.
Not for me, I'm in shape.
And the two people that know how to use it are in this room, so we're okay.
Very good.
All right.
We probably need more.
Yeah, we need more, yes.
Too slow, it's guys.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of going with Cardiac Science Corporation on, for the replacement and/or purchase of the new external defibrillators across the district pending review by our legal team, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. Very, very important, guys. Very, very important. It's a tool that sometimes is unused, but when you need it, you need it. Better have it. Item D, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of administration's recommendation of the ranking, the proposal received for the construction of the new athletic fieldhouse at Wesco High School, and to authorize administration to enter into contract negotiations and approve a contract for this project, CSP number eighteen dash zero two dash one four. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, mention this one briefly. This is a new athletic fieldhouse at Wesco High School. We need it for two main reasons, a growing football program, and to allow for the current fieldhouse to be used for other sports that don't have enough space, including dressing room space. After all three phases, the schematic design, the design development, and construction documents were approved by the board, and a request for competitive seal proposals was released. A total of nine response packages were received. After reviewing all proposals, the ranking committee ranked NM Contracting from McAllen, Texas, the highest, and recommends that they be awarded this project. And the NM Contracting from McAllen, Texas is approximately $203,000 less than the number two ranked. So, the recommendation from administration is that you approve administration's ranking for the proposals received for the construction of the athletic fieldhouse at Wesco High School, and this constitutes approval for administration to start negotiations with contractor number one, NM Contracting from McAllen, Texas. This does not include alternate three, which is lockers. We had originally budgeted $2.9 million for this, so this is about, without the lockers.
About $250,000 or so less, if we were to include lockers.
Okay.
And this, and you checked, y'all checked the references, the committee?
Yes.
Rudy, you're okay?
They're doing workforce right now.
Okay. I'll make the motion to go ahead and go with NM-
Second.
Contractors?
We have a motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Isidoro Nieto to go with NM Contractors and authorize administration to enter into contract negotiations and approve contract for this project, CSP eighteen oh two dash one four. Is there any further discussion?
Yes. Yes. Does not include the lockers, you said?
That does not include the lockers. We did not include the alternate three, right?
So, that's, that's something maybe later on we can look at? Because I think it's important-
We're looking at, going after bids for the, we have the specs that the architect provided.
Okay.
And so, we can have it installed.
For the cabinets? Or locker?
The cabinet is there, option one, alternate one.
How much is that storage building? Is that something similar to what Wesco East has? Alternate number two, is that metal storage building?
Yes, sir.
Because I can, I don't know if y'all been out to East, but they did a great job with that building to really house a lot of their equipment and keep it out of the elements. What do we, what do we have in place at Wesco High? And what is the cost of that building?
The one we were proposing is $212,000, listed on page three, as alternates. That's how much it'll cost. That is why the project is over the budget that we have. We hadn't anticipated that.
That's included with the recommendation?
It will be here, yes.
Okay.
So, the metal building is included?
Yes, sir.
But not the lockers, right?
Not the lockers, correct.
The alternative one and now two, and so, I want to make sure that-
Right.
Yeah.
That what we're agreeing upon up here is, we're all on same boat.
Storage is alternate number two, the lockers is alternate number three.
Okay.
So, its cabinets are included, the engineered metal storage building is included. The only thing that's not included is the lockers.
Yes.
Correct. Okay.
And also, the, Mr. Gomez, they included some allowances in the plan, like all architects do, and they anticipate that there'll probably be about $150,000 that may not be used, so that'll be a decrease on the cost of the project.
And how much did you say the locker cost would be?
About $150,000.
Okay.
Before you buy the lockers, I know they need them, but does this building attach to their weight room?
No.
There's no canopy?
It's separate.
So, if there's money left over, maybe looking at the canopy, so these student athletes aren't walking in the rain, walking exposed, just saying. Again, you can leave it up to them to see what they decide.
When you played, you walked in the rain and ran in the rain.
Times have changed. Times have changed.
Yeah, I remember. Right? Yeah.
Hey, they dress up real nice now, folks. We couldn't even wear any undershirts, so come on.
Okay. I know it's not a part of the agenda item, but this is for the boys. Ms. Maradona, do we have something also for the girls?
Coming up.
Coming up soon?
Yes, sir.
It's on the same, on the same meeting, Doc.
It'll be one of the agenda items.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, so, Dr. Rivera and Rudy, you guys have worked together before, and I'm going to ask Dr. Rivera, because I know that we haven't built a project in a very long time. I believe the last construction, construction project we had was Sam Houston. You know, so it's been a while, and that was when you were here, Doc. So-
It's time.
It's time. It's very, past due, so.
Okay.
Rudy, welcome, welcome aboard, and thank you for helping us get this thing rolling. You know, I've known Rudy for, I'm going to say about fifty years, Rudy. No, forty. Forty, I take it back.
I did my very first job here in 1976.
Well, but I go back to, I think, before that.
Yes.
I met Rudy Gomez in Brownsville. I believe that's where your offices are at still. And I was pouring concrete for my father back then.
Yes.
And we were doing some houses out there, and he was the inspector. So, Rudy has a long run in construction, and I guess so do I. So, I feel comfortable with you here, Rudy, and it's great to be, finally be moving forward with some projects here in Wesco, and thank you for all you've done for us and helping us get this thing rolling.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
When do we get a shovel in the ground?
Well, we have to agree on the contract, have legal review it, and then probably three weeks.
Three weeks. What does that put you, Coach, in timetable for, for next year, or later this fall?
It's not going to really affect us whole bonds, we're just going to probably, you know, make the area safe for kids for travel to and from the stadium. Basically, that's about it. We're not going to displace any kids with this building right now, so we should be okay. We're planning on it.
Completion date is, what did we say on the presentation?
It's 210 days.
Go back to it.
January?
Yeah, it'll be 210 days from the date of the notice to proceed. Once we get the contracts, the bonds and insurance approved by counsel, then we can proceed on that notice.
It could be before the end of the year. Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rudy. Item E, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of the administration's recommendation for the ranking of the proposal received for tennis court lighting project at Wesco High School and Wesco East High School, and item two, to authorize administration to enter into contract negotiations and approve a contract for this project, SP number eighteen dash zero two dash one six. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, currently neither Wesco High School nor Wesco East High School have lights in their tennis courts. This project was ranked as a priority need by the Wesco ISD Facilities Committee, was approved by the Wesco ISD School Board. A total of three proposals were received for this project. The recommendation from administration, the committee, is Zetro Electric LLC from Palm View, Texas, for a total project cost of $498,300, $498,300. It was the first, that one as a first ranking is $200,000 less than what we originally estimated, and we threw out a number, and $121,000 less than the second ranked.
Vote to approve.
Second. Motion approved by Patrick and a second by Isidoro. Is there any further discussion?
Leo, have you worked with these, this company in the past?
Yes, I have. Zetro Electric has done several projects for y'all here, including the baseball stadium, which we did last year. So, not only were they the most qualified, they were lowest bid too, so-
Great.
Shouldn't have an issue. Highly recommend it.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, when will, what about the junior highs? Do we have tennis courts at the junior highs, and do they have lighting?
And the reason they don't probably is because they don't compete at night. They compete most of the time during the weekends.
All of our middle school tennis tournaments are on Saturdays.
Correct.
So, it's starting in the morning, we'll finish way before dark. But do you have tennis courts at the middle schools? No lights, no, sir.
Correct.
Okay, good. Well, I know that this lighting has been long overdue.
Yes.
Long overdue. For several years, the tennis coaches have brought it up and asked, and asked, and finally, we're getting it done for them, so I'm glad this project is also moving forward. And just like our auditorium, when we got it, we started breaking records, this will start doing the same thing for, for our tennis competition, and help our kids along.
Thank you.
Coach, just real quick, do we open up our tennis court for the public? I know we used to, I don't know if we still do. Obviously, we don't have lights now, but now that we're going to be installing lights, is it something that our-
It hasn't been, to answer your question, sir, it hasn't been a huge request, I guess I can answer. I know that Wesco High has always been kind of the core that-
I think we can visit that later.
No, yes, I just want to make sure that-
I know that the city and the school is moving forward on that.
Community.
So-
Make a certain look at it, yes.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. On the approval for the tennis court lighting to Zetro Electric and authorizing administration to enter into contract negotiations for project, SP one eight dash zero two dash one six. Item F, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of administration's recommendation for board of proposal received for the installation of fire security alarm at Wesco High School and fire alarm administration building, CSP number one eight dash zero two dash one seven. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, at Wesco High School, the existing security system was installed when the high school was built in 1973. Most of this system is now obsolete and is requiring continuing maintenance and repair. The administration buildings, fire alarm panels are also obsolete and need to be replaced to provide adequate fire protection. We did receive two proposals for this project. One of the submissions did not meet the specs, so it was not considered. The one that we are recommending is superior alarms from McAllen, Texas, for $568,330. It is first. It is approximately $600,000 less than we thought we would spend. We had assigned $1.2 million for this project, so we're happy about that.
Vote to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Patrick and a second by Andrew on the approval for the administration's recommendation toward the proposal received installation of fire security alarm to Wesco Fire and Fire Alarm Administration Building, CSP one eight dash zero two dash one seven to superior alarm and security out of McAllen, Texas. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. Good job on getting some more money so we can build some other stuff. Item G, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of the administration's recommendation of the ranking of the proposals received for the roofing improvement project at four campuses. That's Airport Elementary, Dr. Armando Cuero Middle Schools Band Hall and Gymnasium, Bigarza Middle Schools Band Hall and Gymnasium, and Wesco High School's Old Band Hall, and item number two, to authorize administration to enter into contract negotiations and approve a contract for this project, number CSP number one eight dash zero two dash twenty-three. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, Andres, I'm going to need your help on this one. Due to budget constraints, the roofing projects were separated into two groups. First of all, roofs needing repairs within twelve to twenty-four months, so it's one to two years, and those roofs needing repairs within thirty-six to forty-eight months. As we mentioned earlier, we have a lot of needs when it comes to roofing across our district, so we want to do this in phases. On December 11, 2017, board, you approved a current method of construction for the roofing improvement projects, competitive seal proposals as a method of construction. You delegated the authority to rank to administration, and you also approved the criteria and points as presented. We explored three different options that were allowable by the bid process, and are recommending an option number three, which means awarding the project to two vendors for a total cost of $2,071,600 to first, Argillo Roofing and Construction, to get two with similar type roofing, that's Cuero Middle School and Wesco High School, for a cost of $443,600, and the second, American Contracting USA Inc., to be awarded Bigarza School and Airport Elementary. This option three is a savings of $108,400 from option one. Option one included just awarding to one vendor, and is also a $41,500 savings over option two. Option two was for two vendors, but one vendor getting the big project at Airport and the other getting the smaller three projects, Cuero, Bigarza, and Wesco High School. So, we're asking that you approve administration's ranking recommendation of the proposals received for the roofing improvements project at the four campuses, and that this constitutes approval for administration to start negotiations with the two contractors ranked under option three, Argillo Roofing and Construction and American Contracting USA Inc. Not only will it save money, it's faster completion than option one, correct?
Yes.
So, you recommend which option?
Option three, two vendors, Argillo Roofing and Construction for Cuero Middle School and Wesco High School, and American Contracting USA Inc. for Bigarza Middle School and Airport Elementary.
So, move.
Second.
We have a motion by Isidoro and a second by Andrew Gonzalez to approve administration's ranking of the proposals and to go with option three, which includes using Argillo Roofing and American Contracting for the roofing projects listed above under item CSP number one eight dash zero two dash twenty-three. Can we move forward with that, Ivan? Or do I need to list everything? That's good enough. Good enough on the clarification.
I believe both were the top two ranked, ranked in order correct?
They're always priced on each one.
And, you know, what I really like is that there's been three projects that y'all have presented, and all of them are coming under-
Under budget.
Under budget, and that is great, because I know that we're going to hit one or two here pretty soon. They're a little bit above, so we're going to need those dollars so that we don't have to, our kids won't be affected by us having to use some of the other reserved money that y'all have for other, other needs. So, that's a good thing. Is there any further discussion on this? There being none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, say no. Okay, the motion carries. As far as we know, it's item option three. Dr. Canales, going with your recommendations on the, that y'all approved previously? So, you have it there. Item H, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of the recommendation, administration's recommendation for the ranking proposal received for the installation of canopies at four campuses, and item two, to authorize administration to enter into contract negotiations and approve contracts for this project, CSP dash one eight dash zero two dash twenty-eight. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, during the fall semester, we had parent meetings at our campuses. One of the topics that came up was canopy in an area for kids to be shielded from the elements, especially when going to the buses at two of our elementaries, or, you know, for dismissal at the end of the day at Roosevelt and Evada. Wesco East High School also identified canopy needs, so did South Palm Gardens through the facilities committee process at the end. The scope of work includes canopy over existing sidewalks or existing student dismissal areas, as I just said. We had originally estimated this to be between eighty-five to, what, ninety thousand dollars, I believe, Andres? And it's looking that the bid came in at $77,117.85. We are recommending that you approve the administration's ranking recommendations of the proposals received and the installation of canopies at all four campuses. This constitutes approval of administration to start negotiations with contractor ranked number one, and the contractor ranked number one was Mata Construction from Beneathus, Texas, and that was the lowest bidder with a hundred and twenty days to complete. They were the first ranked, and so that is our recommendation.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Rodriguez and a second by Patrick Kennedy to approve administration's recommendations and to authorize administration to enter into contract negotiations for the to enter into contract negotiations for the approval of contract CSP one eight dash zero two dash twenty-eight, and that is for, um, installation of canopies at four campuses. So, um, is there any discussion? Dr. Canales, I, I have a question. Have the background checks or, and not background checks, but...
They haven't been, well, actually, we have Mata Construction, the company that worked at the Transition Center.
Okay.
So the staff they had has already gone to fingerprinting.
Have they worked, they've worked first before?
Yes, it is done, and if they have any staff, they have to go to the process, background check and fingerprinting.
Okay, and I didn't mean, I did not mean background, I wanted to follow up on their, on their references.
Yes. Yeah, we, we did call the references.
And they were, but they, you said they have worked for us before?
Yes, they did the sidewalk, uh, project at the Transition Center at the high school.
Okay.
That's the only project they've done for us, but we had a good relationship with them, they finished the project.
Did recently?
Yes.
Who, who did the, the, uh, prior canopies that we have at the other campuses?
Bowman Construction has done some of them.
Okay.
But that's one of the initial budget we had, but they did not submit a bid.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion?
What was the original budget for this?
Eighty-five and ninety thousand. That's the estimate that we have.
Another savings, so that's great.
Another couple thousand.
And it's, it's almost about, what, nineteen thousand less than the second rank, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's also another, another, you know, it's a small project, but, but our kids, uh, in, in, in an effort to equalize, you know, uh, some of these schools are all inside, and some of our kids have to walk outside and, and, and not be protected from the elements, so... This is, this is our way of trying to make everything fair for all our kids and, and, and doing as much as we can with what we have, so... Thank you, Dr. Canales, for making this possible for our children. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion carries on the covered canopies for the four campuses. Item project number CSP one eight dash zero two dash twenty-eight. Item I, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of the construction documents phase for the chemical storage building for the Aquatic Center project. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, on April eighteenth, twenty seventeen, the Board approved Rafa Architects Inc. of McAllen, Texas to develop the plans and specs for the construction of the chemical storage building at the Aquatic Center. The chemical storage, storage building is needed to house all of the required pool chemicals, acid, and chlorine tablets. We are recommending that you consider approval of the construction, construction documents phase for the chemical storage building for the Aquatic Center project so that we can, um, go out to bid as the next step. We are estimating the cost at a hundred thousand dollars plus architect fees, correct?
Yes. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Uh, my name's Humberto Rodriguez, of Rafa Architects, and so from the last time you all approved the schematic design, design development, and as you can see right now, we've already got a lot of work done. I believe, uh, Mr. President, you asked about the natural ventilation, and we elected to go with, uh, a, what they call a fiberglass system, which is a ventilated system that would allow the air to go and minimize the amount of rain. I will say that, you know, dew and those kind of things and moisture would be there, but, I mean, the thing is to try to make it as much sustainable as possible. The structural engineer, and, and we got the building sections and everything done there. Structural engineer's already done, uh, a lot of the legwork in there, uh, and we got foundation drawings already, details, and everything, we're ready to rock and roll on this project. We got, uh, very like, uh, just very minor electrical work to do on that, and, um, uh, this, uh, this is the schedule that we have so far, uh, so if, if we get approval tonight, uh, we'll be ready to advertise, uh, this coming Sunday, and we'll have the following Sunday, and we can go off a bids as, as it's presented there tonight.
Perfect.
Any questions?
No.
Move to approve.
Second.
Construction documents.
Thank you.
Motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Dr. Rodriguez. Both doctors, both.
Thank you.
In good hands. To approve the construction documents phase for the chemical storage building for the Aquatic Center project. Is there any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion carries. Item J, discussion and possible action, thank you, Humberto. Item J, discussion and possible action for the board to consider, one, approval of recommendation, of administration's recommendation of the ranking of the proposals received for the construction of a digital scoreboard for Bobby Lackey Stadium, and item two, to authorize administration to enter into contract negotiations and approve a contract for this project. Project number CSP number one seven dash zero eight dash six five. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, the athletic, our athletic department, um, is recommending that a new digital scoreboard be installed at Bobby Lackey Stadium. After ten years of service to our community and the department, our scoreboard has surpassed its year of expectancy. It has become a weekly challenge to ensure that scoreboard functions well for game time. Challenges include issues with the screen, malfunctioning panels, problems with controls, issues with time clock, issues with the horn, with the game clock, and with program advertisements. Over the past several years, we have had to request service from scoreboard manufacturer on the day of the event, requiring the use of the scoreboard. It's, of course, pending the loan, pending the loan right now, or looking at other ways to finance it, correct? So, the vendor that administrations, well, administration did rank it and, um, are recommending that the proposals received for the construction installation of the new digital scoreboard for the stadium. This constitutes approval for administration to start negotiations with contractor ranked number, ranked number one, and that's Dectronics, uh, from Brookings, South Dakota. The total price for that one's one million three hundred fifty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-eight sixteen, with a hundred and twenty days to complete, and they were the first ranked and the lowest.
They're the lowest. I was here ten years ago when the scoreboard was, was first built, and it was state-of-the-art, second to no one. So now I wanna make the motion.
Second.
Another state-of-the-art, and I'm recommending that we go ahead and go with Dectronics as recommended by administration.
Second.
And Coach Vela, it's gonna be the biggest, among the biggest in South Texas, our scoreboard?
The best.
The best, okay.
There you go.
And we've got very good operators, they know how to use it, so...
We have a motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Sidorov to approve, uh, administration's recommendations on, on go with Dectronics and to authorize them to enter into contract negotiations and approve a contract for this project. CSP one seven zero eight dash six five, the project being the... Where is it? Scoreboard for Bobby Lackey Stadium. Is there any further discussion?
Do we have a description of it?
There's pictures of everywhere.
Pictures? Maybe I didn't see them.
I have a question also.
And then I have a question for Mr. Rodriguez.
How did, how did we pay for it the last time?
It was paid through advertisement.
Advertisement.
So I was gonna ask, uh, Coach Riosas and Andres to make sure that...
Correct.
And Coach, uh, do we have panels there? Coach Vela, we have enough panels there to go ahead and sell the advertisement? In Wesco, we have a lot of vendors.
In the video documents, it was requested just to have all video and then, uh, the panels, like, they got those.
Supposedly screen.
Okay. So it should pay for itself through advertisement?
And also a part of the, uh, part of the, with Dectronics, they also offer marketing services. So basically, they get more boots on the ground in the area besides just ourselves, we're gonna work really hard.
And are we still at zero percent interest?
We, we haven't determined that.
You haven't determined that one?
What's gonna happen to the old sign? Any, any idea yet? Okay, I know that that sign is made up by, of components, correct? If I'm wrong on, on any of that, and I'm, and I'm not talking about the screen itself. That one's probably, yeah, it's done. But what I'm talking about is the other screens that are surrounding it. Is there any possibility of salvaging those and using them somewhere else around the stadium and selling those, uh...
The technology is sold.
It's done.
I know, I know it was stated it was ten years old, but it's actually, it's gonna be thirteen years old already.
Yeah.
And so the technology is way outdated. We actually have had some issues with it already, and we can't find parts to replace it. So the technology is sold, it's not used.
It's done. Okay.
Yeah, one of the, uh, just to add, the screen was one of the options that we wanted to see we could use, place it somewhere and keep using it, but it's, it's like Carlos Mr. Vela said, it's old and it might be more problematic.
The nature of, of the, of that, uh, of that thing, of the screen, I'm sure that once you start moving it, it's gonna fall apart, it's gonna break, and it's done.
The warranty on, on this digital scoreboard? Coach Vela?
I listed on the third page, five years parts, uh, I'm shooting, five years parts of labor, they added five years labor, ten years parts of labor for the, for the tax project.
How much are we generating right now with the current scoreboard?
About eighty thousand dollars.
A year?
Yes, I'm looking at increasing that amount.
Okay, make sure that, uh, we go out there and, uh, get what the other districts are doing as far as their rates and that we're in line, uh, with what they're charging for advertising.
Andres, I would just kind of piggyback off, off of Dr. Rivera in previous meetings. The money from our advertisement, uh, keep it separate so that ten years from now, that we go through this, having to go through this again, the money's already there where we don't have to go get a loan.
We are doing that already. With this year, we started putting a separate account.
You started this year, great.
Well, just in accounting, you don't have to put the money like over here.
No, it's a separate account, so we know, easy to tell you how much it is.
Thank you.
Because the one that we have paid for itself.
Yes.
And I'm sure this will, will also pay for itself and, and serve the community very well. I mean, and only one S and B is that one football game, one graduation, one event, and, and you know how important that, uh, that, uh, scoreboard is, you know, just to highlight our, highlight our children, not only our children, but the community. I mean, the community, y'all, uh, I don't know if y'all do the Kiss Cam or not, but if y'all do, I mean, everybody wants to be on that, so... Okay, so is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion carries. Item K, thank you. Gentlemen, item K, discussion and possible action for the board to approve the construction document for the parking lot additions project at Rudy Silva Elementary School and Justice Raoul Gonzalez Elementary School. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, um, on February thirteenth, twenty seventeen, you approved the construction of the parking lot improvements at both elementary schools as part of the priority facilities projects for the district. On April the tenth, twenty seventeen, you approved to hire Mariano Garcia's civil engineering firm to design the plans and specs and oversee the construction of the parking lot improvements at both elementary schools. The, um, principals at both schools have communicated to administration the need for more parking lot space to help alleviate the traffic congestion at both campuses with parents picking up students at the end of the school day. Also mentioned congestion during the day because of parking. Lot spaces available at campus are mostly taken off by, taken up by school and district staff. As mentioned earlier, our campus is doing a, a great job of parental involvement and having parent meetings, and we need the spaces for our parents and the, the community to visit our schools and be part of the team here at Wesco ISD. So we are recommending that you consider approval of the construction documents for the parking lot additions at both elementary schools so that we can go out for proposals.
I'll move to approve. I'll second. A motion by Dr. Rodriguez and a second by Oscar Caballero to approve the construction document for the parking lot additions project at Rudy Silva Elementary School and Justice Raoul Gonzalez Elementary School. Is there any further discussion? I have one question. Um, I believe I, we had notes, I had seen those, uh, documents previously, and I had addressed some concerns, or I had some questions and concerns, and asked you all to follow up with the principals as to the location of the parking lots and maybe possibly making them both the same, and I don't know if you've addressed that, and if the principals are happy with what they're getting, then I'm happy to.
For our two principals.
Hi.
Hello.
Good evening. To address your question, they did, uh, bring the proposal to me. Mr. Castillo was there, um, the other day, exactly showed me where it was that they were going to build those extra parking lot spaces, and yes, I agree with, you know, the placement of where they're going to be at. That's gonna help us a lot with our, um, not only with our cafeteria staff, but when we have assemblies, because it's gonna be right on the other side of the, uh, cafeteria, that's gonna help us tremendously for, um, our assemblies, for our parents.
Okay. Thank you.
Don't we got the money budgeted for these?
Yes.
Yes, for the maintenance fund balance. We had allocated five hundred thousand, and right now we're anticipating four hundred and sixty-one thousand?
Four hundred and sixty-one thousand, yes.
For both of them?
Yes.
Four sixty-one.
And what was budgeted?
We, we, we allocated five hundred thousand.
Okay, that's always good in your budget?
I'm good.
Good afternoon. Now, speaking on behalf of Ms. Garcia, she had to leave on a personal, uh, family matter, uh, but she's been in communication and she's happy with the design, they've been working closely with her, so I just wanted to go ahead and, uh, share her comments with you as well.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion carries on the approval of the construction documents for the parking lot additions at project at Rudy Silva Elementary School and Justice Raoul Gonzalez Elementary School. And this is only for the construction documents, that's correct. Okay, item L, discussion and possible action for the board to approve Trinity MEP Engineering to develop the specifications and construction documents as well as oversee the construction for the security access control project at all elementary schools. Dr. Canales.
Mr. Sanchez, will you take us through this one?
The Board had approved this project, we have heard of, the Board approved it, and when we did the method of construction for this project, we mentioned that we wanted to hire Trinity MEP Engineering to help with the specs, but we had not run an agenda item to formally approve them, so that's what this agenda item does. Get them approved so that they can continue legally with the project, but they have started working with us already on it.
Okay.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Patrick and a second by Andrew to authorize, uh, administration to, uh, or to approve Trinity MEP Engineering to develop the specifications and construction documents as well as oversee the construction for the security access control project at all elementary schools. Is there any comments? I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Will all the schools be running, or will all this be as the principals want it? Or are we gonna go with a, a formula to, this is what everybody gets?
We had, uh, Trinity and, uh, Safety and Security Department walk the campuses over the Christmas break, uh, so they did meet with the principals and kind of, uh, design the layout of, you know, where the strikers needed to go, where the exits were gonna be, so the principals did have a lot of input into the location of the, of the access control systems.
The, the only concern I have, and, and I'm, I'm glad the principals do need to have their input, but we need to make sure that, that somebody spends the time to, I guess, to, to clarify that what they're doing is, is, uh, the correct thing or the right thing. And, and we just heard that earlier on, on discussion on those, uh, defibrillators, as to their locations. You know, make sure that, uh, you know, that we're not just doing, you know, doing something different at one school, another, different at another school. It needs to be uniform as far as the, the safety is concerned, and, or as uniform as possible. I know that all our buildings are not the same.
Right.
Uh, but if you can't get into one school, you can't get into the other one. If you can get in, you know, to a lobby, then there needs to be a lobby at each of the schools, not, not this one, yes, that one, no, 'cause then we're, we're not the same across the board. So that is the one thing that I, I, I do need to see on that, or I would like to see on that. You know, so moving forward, make sure that, uh, that, uh, those items are addressed. Is there any further discussion? One final comment. You know, we can automate and, and, and modernize and make us safe as we can, but it takes personnel to make that system operate. You know, so it's, it's gonna be the, the, the principals and everybody's job to, to make our, our schools safer, and I know that, that we do a good job already, but by doing this, it should be a hundred percent. I should not be able to get into any school, and it should be the same for, for anybody else. You know, it should be, you know, we're gonna go to the office, we're gonna get checked in, and, and then we go to take care of whatever business we're gonna go take care of at a school. You know, um, and I've said this before to our superintendent, you know, I've been to other districts where you cannot go in the building until you get checked, you know, and I wanna see that here in Wesco, at least to a certain extent, to where we're not running our parent... So with these cars, will you be able to monitor who goes in and out, like if in case something happens on the weekend or?
Yes, yes, they're similar to, the software will allow us to track who gets access, date, time, date stamp, timestamp, et cetera.
Okay.
That's very good.
And the entrance that they went in through and all that, right?
Correct. Wherever there's a reader, they will track where it comes through, and then everywhere else where there's no readers, they will not be able to access from the outside with a key.
Right. Okay. Good job. Sounds good. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. And now, what we have all been waiting for. Item number sixteen, closed meetings to discuss, A, personnel matters, Texas Government Code 551.074. Item number one, employment of personnel. Item two, resignations. Item three, deliberation regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Texas Government Code 551.074 and 551.071. B, consultation with attorney regarding, A, pending contemplated litigation. Item B, a settlement offer, or item C, a matter which is a duty of the attorney of Wesco ISD under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with chapter 551 of Texas Government Code, Texas Government Code 551.071. And number one, confer with counsel regarding utilization of realtors. And the time is eighteen, and this board is going into closed session. Thank you all. Time is nine twenty-seven. Items discussed while during closed session were personnel matters, Texas Government Code 551.074. Item number one, employment of personnel. Dr. Gonzalez, I believe that is a non-action item?
Non-action item.
Item number two is resignations. Dr. Gonzalez.
Board of Trustees, a move that you approve resignations as discussed in closed session.
So move.
It's a mid-contract resignation, so the board takes action.
Oh, second, okay. Patrick, second. We have a motion by Dr. Rodriguez and a second by Patrick to approve the resignations as presented by administration. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number three, deliberation regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Texas Government Code 551.074 and 551.071. Dr. Gonzalez, I believe that's also a non-action item?
That is a non-action.
Okay.
I'm so correct? Three, deliberation.
Yes. Okay, moving on to item B, consultation with attorney regarding item A, a pending or contemplated litigation. Item B, a settlement offer, or item C, a matter which is a duty of the attorney to the Wesco ISD under the Texas disciplinary rules of personal conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, Texas Government Code 551.071. We have, item number one is confer with counsel regarding utilization of realtors. Dr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, so I'd ask that the board take some action to allow us, allow legal counsel to proceed as directed in the closed session.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Andrew and a second by Sidorov to allow legal counsel to proceed as discussed, to proceed as discussed in closed session on the utilization of realtors for Wesco ISD. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. That is all the items that we have. The next item is item number eighteen, which is adjourned.
So move.
We, time now is nine twenty-nine, and this meeting is adjourned.